allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We're reading orders, working through the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Close carries. Through the minutes.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Yep. Any directions on?
It's like me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close carries. General public concern. Be down the door again.
Are you standing up? Do you have something, sir?
No.
All the mics get turned up.
Yep, we're on the.
Yeah, I'm down here.
I sent you that thing on two hundredth street out here.
Did you know it's in me?
Uh, yeah. I text you about getting that room straight or closed.
Oh, on two hundredth, uh, that was, wasn't school, that was.
Stellmar?
Stellmar, yes, yes. We got it done, uh, Thursday.
He texted me back and says it's a whole lot better and he appreciates you getting out on it.
Yeah, I'm glad we were able to get to it Thursday, um, otherwise it would've been today.
But he's very appreciative of it, so. Don't get them very often. Okay. Discussion approved, approved for the second floor, some store room and the air conditioner. Myself, I think this is a little high. Eleven hundred dollars to get a crane.
Now, that doesn't surprise me.
Eleven hundred dollars for a crane, materials thirteen eight and labor is eighty seven hundred for a total of twenty-three thousand, seven, six, four.
Two.
Want to do it there?
That's a big air conditioner.
A ten ton and then, uh, and then I wonder how much ductwork is involved?
Uh, well, it doesn't say that, but, uh, saw the ductwork. It's all electrical either, that's why they're gonna sit down there on the ground and raise the, the head up, the canutine up or?
No, I think this whole thing will sit on the roof.
Right up there in the window?
I'm gonna guess this thing's sitting all up on the roof.
You're crazy.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
This is replacing an existing?
This is the one in the courtroom upstairs.
Cause it's loud up there.
It's, it's got a great big squirrel cage fan up there that when you turn on it, whoo, 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 and it starts.
So this is a new unit?
It's a new unit.
It's not replacing an old one?
Yeah.
Well, it is.
We're not replacing the old one that's upstairs.
Okay.
But, um, I, I would really like to just a little more investigating into this before you spend that kinda money.
Like get another, another bid and make something comparable.
Well, Peggy said she put it out and some of the local people said they were too busy.
Yeah, well, I'll make a couple of calls.
That's fine, I, I, not that I'm beating
Yeah.
the door down to spend twenty-three grand either.
Yeah.
Should we table this till next week?
Yeah, I'll just do that.
Can you check on?
I'll check on that.
But I mean.
I'll just get a, I'll just ask him, geez, what's it cost to put a ten, ten unit on a roof?
You gotta get a crane. Twenty-two dollars.
That's, the crane sounds reasonable.
Crane sounds cheap.
Cause they're two hundred and fifty bucks an hour at the minimum for a small one.
Really?
And then.
We usually spend three, four thousand dollars for a crane.
Yeah, for an afternoon.
But, but that's for the whole day.
The day, yeah.
Well, if you wanna check, I mean, we did have the discussion about the grade, of upgrading there.
Yeah.
That's what we gotta remember, that's bids from Fort Dodge, I bet it's the cranes coming from Fort Dodge, so you're gonna pay mileage from wherever the crane's coming from.
This is a dumb one.
Yeah, it's a mid, they're off at main office.
It's a main office.
Oh, okay.
Can you take it upon yourself?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just make a couple of phone calls to plumbers I know.
Let us know and.
And tell me if it's out of line. It's not, it's not out of line, don't, don't know.
Right.
Yeah, we already determined the crane wasn't early out of line, so if you wanna check on that, we say we do that and then prove it, this is prove it next week.
Yep.
There's no date on there, right?
No.
Just thirty days.
Forty days, Wednesday issue, May twenty-first, so that was.
Well, that was for thirty days of the date of issue.
Right.
We're still okay.
Yeah.
For next week.
I'll make a look up. Alright. This is plumbers and find out if that's a reasonable quote, cause we only got one.
Well, see now we did that so quick, now we're in limbo.
Cranes.
Yeah, we got a crane.
Let's go to the plane, get that done.
Did you get your painting question answered?
Yes. It was, actually painted in the courtroom and some up, in the upstairs bathrooms and things like that.
The number I had for general, if I had the right number, was three twenty-four, eight forty-seven, ninety-six. And grainage was thirty-three, nine, seven, three, seven, seven.
I had, I'll second that, cause that's the numbers I had.
I guess one question on that, Ben, would any of that rock that was on that, would that been some of that female rock, would that?
Some of it was, yeah, some of that rock will end up getting reimbursed.
So, that's what I wondered.
But, I think it was about seventy thousand dollars with the rock between the two quarries on this claims period. Figure we didn't get much springtime rock hauling, so we're in full rock hauling right now trying to get all our gravel shipped out.
Alright. Okay, any other questions on that? Cranes? All in favor?
Aye.
Close carries. Alright, we're a few minutes early.
You should take advantage of that.
About five, early pet. I don't disagree anybody even being here yelling at kissing. I'm gonna yell at you.
Um, I just wanted to, I guess, update you guys a little bit, um, back in, it was late February, early March, building trades board approached me about possibly having the kids do a cabin project on Sheldon Park.
Yep.
Um, I know it's been a minute and hopefully you guys have kinda, kinda been up to ski on that a little bit, but, um, talked to my board about that, they were gung ho, thought it was a fantastic project. I've been to a couple building trades boards, everybody on that board is very enthusiastic about it. City of Humboldt has been very cooperative as far as trying to facilitate, facilitate things or keep things moving along. Um, so everybody's excited, great thing. But. The dilemma, I guess, somewhat of a dilemma, is how you pay for it. Um, with the timing being early March, when they approached me, obviously the budget, budget process was just finalized. So, I've been doing a little digging, um, as far as our options, um, Travis Skankin has suggested, or said that there may be some money available from the Economic Development Group, which Alyssa O'Farrell spearheaded. That money would be zero percent interest, so that would be, if we borrow it, be our best option. Um, another option would be from Midland Power Corn Melt, I guess they do.
Low interest loans, yeah.
This sort of thing, which I didn't realize that, but that's a two percent interest rate. Um, maximum term is ten years, if we wanted to go out that far, obviously if we wanted to pay it off before then, it would be empty.
So what's the number?
I was gonna say, how big is this cab?
I was thinking like, I don't know, what size, twenty?
Yeah, like North Gosh, you got like.
Cabin, so like twelve by sixteen. About five hundred and seventy-six square feet and we'd like to build two of them.
Sure. One for the guys and one for the girls, or what?
I guess you could do that.
They don't even got bathrooms in them.
Uh, yeah, it's, we call it wet cabin.
Yeah, yeah, I was, I was thinking like these little cabins, they got to gosh up there, just.
It's, it's popular, but not people in this day and age.
We want that one a little bit. No, I think, I think it's a very, yeah. I can't get a campground where.
Small.
I don't like this.
That's nice.
Be like, have a great, like, streets with, they're really, really popular, really.
Just be like the ones that are bridge woods.
Similar, yeah.
They got all the amenities in them.
Yep. So we're looking at about sixty thousand apiece, materials, sewer, water, electric, the whole, whole nine yards.
So what do you think the payback time would be with rentals and stuff?
What, gosh, is very popular, rented a lot, the payback, I mean, we haven't really established, uh, at nightly rate yet, I would, I had to guess, I'd say maybe sixty-ish a night.
Oh, really? I would say no.
It'd be, it'd be at least one ten.
At least, okay.
Yeah. Hotel, you can't get a hotel good at, way nicer than a hotel.
Oh, heck yeah.
One thirty, one forty even, yeah, mine.
Yeah, I think people would pay that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd, I'd sign it up and severing it out, makes money.
Yeah.
Spoken like a true slummed out millionaire.
I know, I know.
You'd pay at least a hundred, don't you think, Ben? You'd pay a hundred.
Well, if you're renting it for an entire week or something like that, I don't think you would, but, you know, if you're just.
Well, you could have, you could have night rentals and week rentals too.
So what, what's, uh?
It's full accommodations, you can't, yeah.
Yeah, you can't.
And you're paying for a forty or sixty thousand dollar camper in there.
Yeah, and if you don't have a camper.
I don't.
You got two bedrooms here.
That'll be nicer, especially when they're brand new. Don't you guys have a camp?
There, you gotta have a lease, I mean, I've rented them at other places and we paid.
It's old, it works good.
Especially weekends, I could see through the weekend, you could go redo the rates.
Right, yeah.
For, for a week, there definitely would be an authorized rate.
Where would you locate, uh, is it up in that new, above?
Well, the property that we bought from Dave, um, had to be in the south, well, it'd be in the northeast portion of that property we bought from Dave. I don't know, are you familiar with like where the woodpile is at? Sheldon, just south of there, south of, east of there.
We got a question. Now, is this something you would do this fall?
Yes.
They don't have a project already lined up?
They don't, this is it.
Oh, okay.
Two thousand nineteen, twenty school year.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, typically they have lined up.
That's why I guess we did too, Warren, Dan Oswald was the instructor, he wasn't sure that would keep the kids.
Yeah, I wasn't. He's not, he's not really quick.
Oh, I didn't think that.
Close. Oh, labor is free.
Free. Except his, his instructor. But we don't.
This school pays him.
Maybe, maybe school pays that.
So, it's just the actual cost of the structure.
Materials are what we take, and obviously something.
Right, and your sixty thousand approximate is about inclusive
Yes.
of the water system and everything?
Yes, that's, and that's a piece.
A piece?
Or is that total piece?
Nope.
That's a piece, so we're in control. So I, what I guess my board wanted to do was look at borrowing like a hundred thousand. Um, we still do have the money for the sale box, so, um, we had hoped to save that and use that as a match for another grant. So we don't wanna.
Well, we'll do it.
All that money to do that.
Well, you mentioned low or no interest loans.
Right.
And if you put Rick in charge of this payment structure.
Yeah.
I feel that you're gonna get a fairly quick return on, you're gonna get a fairly quick return on your investment.
Yep.
So I would, and if the building trades who's building them is scheduled for this fall, this school year, I would just say go ahead with it. I mean, you, you, uh, have this in the new area, the new they purchased, that's why you did that.
Yep, and, and honestly, it wasn't a long, long range plan. It just maybe wouldn't have happened this quickly, but I just feel like this is the opportunity.
I think so.
Oh, yeah.
And you know what? Next, next year is gonna be a really pleasant year from the get-go, in the spring, and it's gonna be a nice year for people to go camping and rent cabins and so on and so forth, so, and they'll be there then.
Yep.
For the following year.
They definitely get used to it.
I think, I would move forward, I would move, I would suggest move forward with this.
Yeah, we market it, Rick, put it on like, um, those internet sites, you know, and things like that.
Oh.
So that, BRB is the new word or something like that? I've been on, I mean, you get a lot of.
I'm like how the parks stuff say, it's like a passive page, it's really, really.
Yeah, I don't think you have any problems, people wanting to.
As far as, thank you, Kevin, when you drive by and see how many campers are sitting in there.
A darn construction company will pay that for the whole season.
Possibly.
If they do that, then you rack, you jack up that rate.
That's what I say, I think, I think you get it too cheap, you ain't gonna let the locals have it, cause somebody else snagging them up and rent the whole dang season.
Right, yeah.
What's the, I'm not very good at reading schematics, but what would be the capacity occupancy of these?
Six.
Six.
The house, the house, that type of thing.
But that, so six total.
Six would be max.
Comfortable six.
Yeah.
It brings sleeping bed.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Grab a few more here.
Okay, but, yeah, I just think, you know, a lot of people like the, like camping kind of idea, but they don't have a camper.
And they wanna go with friends who have campers and, and they, that's a big time.
Yeah, it is, so I, I just think that, uh, supply and demand is very favorable.
I agree.
Now, maybe one bedroom, put one bedroom.
We talked about that, Dave, um, so it, this is.
Liminary.
It could change slightly, but that's gonna be the basic, basically, yeah.
And, and the building's trade instructor is gung ho.
Yes, yep, very excited.
Try to call the iron is hot.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking, just not like I say, where's the Martin Trump though?
Well, you just, pretend you're a farmer, you just borrow it. And that's, and then you just leave and you hope for the best moving forward, and I.
Thing that Kelly does, but I, in this situation.
Yeah, well, he can get half percent.
Even two percent, and the return on this investment, I think is gonna be very, very good.
Consensus opinion is to look at that ten-year term.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then pay it off over the course of that, that's what I was thinking too.
Yeah, you don't wanna.
I, I just tried to do the math and I think you'd easily pay it off in ten years.
Yeah.
And I think you can also use the ability, if you have a busy year, you can make, pay ahead and it's a plus.
And also at least, cause, well, you shut the water off early out there, I mean, are these gonna be a little longer season possibly with campers? Yeah. Cause then I think you could even rent for another month or two in the spring and a month in the fall. Cause just cause the demand's out there for housing. For, for housing for people.
Yeah, we could go through, you know, March first, uh, December first. Obviously with weatherizing.
Yeah.
And a real winter season.
Right.
And you can stay open borders and you can camp there for sure.
That's what I was wondering, pick up a couple more revenue.
Yep.
You're gonna pay for the last, or maybe the corn.
With the great, re, reap.
Grant? Pay any of that?
Reap, that's a, funds, campground development, motor development, like this.
More for land, isn't it?
Yeah, and a lot of it goes to trails and land purchases, but that is the idea.
I think we'll have our blessings on it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Go for it.
Your work, Todd, hey, you popped the bike trails, now then, well, that's improved.
I'm heading there.
I know. Thanks, Todd.
Okay, Ben, you're, uh, you're five minutes early too.
You can write that in the journal.
We haven't got the three English.
No, Ben's gonna be gone, so he doesn't.
I'll, I'll, I'll finish real quick. I just have, uh, a couple of applications to work in the county right-of-way. Firstly, basically tiling is in full force for everybody. The first application to work in the right-of-way is for Deer Ridge Properties, uh, by way of Brent Keen. He is looking at crossing our two hundred and thirtieth street, dumping directly into the start of the drainage district with a twelve or fifteen inch concrete. He is, uh, requesting application to work in the right-of-way and requesting fifteen hundred dollars for us to cross the crossing.
And you've had lengthy discussion about this, looked at, no issues?
No issues. And this contractor, and the name seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I talked to him about the box possibly.
Yes, and, and they're gonna stay far enough away from that wooden box cover that when we replace that in the next five to ten years.
Won't get into this. Do you need, these approved separately?
Uh, probably.
I'd make a motion on the Deer Ridge Properties LLC crossing, do you approve?
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close carries. The second one that I've got is Tom Brown with, uh, Dorn Beer Drainage. This is a tile crossing that I guess I've been working with Tom for some last year, since last year, yeah.
Were they gonna, Dave would do this anytime soon?
He said he's gonna wait till fall on this now, but he was getting everything in order.
So the paperwork's in line?
Yeah, so the paperwork and everything.
It's actually ahead of time instead of after the fact.
Yeah.
Cause I didn't think he'd be doing it, I heard from him that contractor didn't get there, basically.
I think the contractor was there, he didn't have the downstream property owner's.
Permission.
Permission, so what he's got is an actual legal easement agreement between him.
Oh, so he's getting that.
Downstream owner, so he's got everything on his end, I guess, checked off.
So, but, I was gonna say, I didn't think they were gonna be out there next week, it's gonna be a fall.
Yeah, he, they missed the window as far as the spring's construction by now.
Well, that's good though, he's gonna have all that stuff ready to go when they get there.
Yeah, so this is another one where he's looking at a, uh, uh, new twelve inch drainage name, uh, this one I believe dumps directly into lots free.
Yes, it does, that's where it ends up.
Yes.
I'd love that.
And he's looking at fifteen hundred dollar road assistance crossing on this one as well.
So this is crossing which?
This would be one twenty, just west of one sixty-nine.
Oh, okay.
Up the hill. Once you get up on top of the hill, uh.
Yeah, it's not very far, where level's out there.
Yes.
And again, I, sounds good, I would make the motion to approve this said crossing for Tom Brown.
Start. Go ahead.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close carries. The last thing that I have is one that we spoke, uh, last week on the phone with Dave and then with you guys by text. This is a application to work in the right-of-way for John Larson and Mankey Tiling. Uh, they're patent tiling John Larson's field and he needs access to an existing tile. We didn't know if he would be able to connect it out in this field at the angle that the tile line is running, and thinks that he might have to get into the.
Right-of-way.
Right-of-way to connect to that tile line, that's an existing tile line out there, uh, it appears to be in good shape from what I've seen out there, and it was one of those things I think where Mankey was able to get in.
Did you actually go out and look at it?
Yes.
Remember the question was why, means that tile continues into the field, why it is, they're requesting hooking it up in the right-of-way?
And at the angle that the tile was running, it was a pretty.
Sharp bank.
Pretty, it was pretty gradual, or it seemed like he stayed in the roads right-of-way for quite a ways, and they're trying to run their tile at the lowest point of the hill, and it might be an issue where the lowest point of the field connects to the tile opposite, as opposed to.
What's the timeframe on this project?
It might actually already be done.
Really?
Yeah, I went and looked at it, uh, after we talked, what was that, Wednesday?
Yeah.
And I didn't go up there Friday and check on it, so, I'll, I'll, I got it that way after this meeting, so I can run up and check on it.
Okay.
He had his shovels already up there for the tiling machines, so machines are, the work's already done.
Okay, but at least that was the question, there was the depth of the tile, basically, that they're hooking into.
Yeah, and the, the depth of the tile up there right now is eighteen inches two feet, it's not extremely deep, so.
I minded he needed a better access point that was in the right-of-way versus the field.
Versus the field, yeah.
Okay, thanks for looking at it, so again, I'd make a motion to approve the work in the right-of-way in this case, not a road crossing.
Start. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for getting up there and answering that question. Well, it was valid question. Usually they don't wanna be in the right-of-way.
Right.
Usually they don't wanna be in the right-of-way.
Did you guys go out by the aisles and fix that ditch?
Yes, uh, we got up there last Tuesday, I met with Rick Hopper on Monday out on site after the board meeting. Uh, we, I guess, spitballed a couple of ideas of what we could do as far as the county to try and protect that new intake and the roads right-of-way. So we went out, we were able to get out there on Tuesday, clean ditch in both directions, placed tree loads of riprap out there, I think, as well as, uh, more or less a permanent head wall on the roadside to stop the washing. Uh, they did create a little bit of a perimeter from the sound of things, if it becomes a water pounding issue, Rick talked about putting a secondary intake out of the field and having that dump into that.
Yep, dial would like to do that as soon as, I can't believe the corn, or the corn is already popping up out there, but he wants to do it on a, about a planer length away from the field so that he doesn't have to do.
And then what he told me is that he's basically gonna leave that as grass for that planer with.
Yeah, that'd be good.
We did shoot grass seed on it Wednesday, Thursday, and we overcast that onto the burn.
Oh, okay.
Did you get your hydro seeder operational?
Yes, yeah.
So you use that?
So we use the hydro.
So all that disturbed soil and all that fixing up got hit with the seeding gun?
Yes, yep.
Well, that went from looking like someone hit their thumb with a hammer, like a real painful mess, but it looks very, very nice, and really appreciate.
Yeah, it looked great.
Thank, thank you very much for doing that.
We got that done, uh, we, we got your crossing done down on two forty.
Yes, you did.
For, uh.
Ron Reddy's Properties, you know, farming.
Well, they got that pipe put in the road.
We got that pipe in on the road, now we're cleaning ditch in both directions and creating positive drainage to run to the new intakes.
They get a lot done in the working ten hours, do they?
We didn't get very bad. And they should be a lot done in ten hours, because they only worked four of them, that's probably.
Yeah.
Well, Dennis and Scott both said to tell them thanks, of course, the only compliment was, thank you, just wish that they'd have got it planted earlier, I said, well, we all wish we'd been planted earlier and we had knee-high corn, but.
And I talked to Dennis, cause we're in from, uh, on the north side and it's. Right, and I talked to Dennis because we were in from swing on the north side and it's probably a row and a half out in the field as far as where the right-of-way is. And he expressed interest in casting it out in the field, but then he wanted us to wait until fall and I said that it probably wouldn't happen because the last thing I wanna do is wait till fall and then potentially not get there.
And he said, "I mean, you should."
Then all of a sudden, it's next year.
And he always-
Next year again.
He said, "I'm just, I got it ready to plant it and not knowing when the next rain's coming, I'm just gonna plant it and I'll deal with the plant labor." So.
So we're, we're hopefully wrapping that up today and tomorrow. Uh, and we did take twenty-five loads out to conservation so they can build the pads for these houses that they just got approved.
I'm gonna drive out there and snook now and see where they are located.
Where, you said the wood chip pile is at? That's where we all done that for them, so. And I think the plan for them is Jensen's gonna level and compact it, pad.
So they, they put those pads in the concrete and then through the summer and then the kids will, when they come?
Yeah, they'll-
They don't do the concrete work, do they?
They'll have everything ready for them when school starts.
Oh, you think they should have them do concrete too?
They should have them do concrete, but they don't, they let them do sidewalks.
Oh, okay.
They don't think like that. They do sidewalks and sidewalks.
Structural, structural ability?
Good for me.
That they don't want to do the concrete?
No, it's just that the plumbing has to be in and it just slows the price. If they don't have that done, they never get it done. Cause they, they don't have enough time. So.
Do you have any, um, appreciation when you sweep concrete on the ground after you put it?
Yeah, after you streaked concrete off.
Yeah.
I, I done a driveway on Thursday. It was hotter than crap out.
That was good for you.
No, it wasn't. It's not good for home management.
You still, you lived through it.
I did, it was a kid.
Thank you. Thanks for all the-
Thanks, Ben.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next is drainage.
Oh, just so you, everyone knows, the DNR, because we just talked about the thing they fixed up for the, for that intake on the drainage district three-five, the DNR says that a water quality violation has not been observed at this time. This is back really early this spring that we notified when all that washed to the south.
If we don't have a whole lot of committee reports, we could do our committee reports quickly.
Yeah, I'd say, really driven roughly.
Chris would know. She would have to come back in here after we get done.
It's a part of meetings or not.
You got any hearing?
I had no, I had no official meetings. I just, I told you this week. Did we have the LEC last week? We have that. LEC Monday mornings, last Monday morning. Thank you, Rick. I didn't write it in my book. Then after last week's meeting, Jason Ben Dixon from Jacobson Westergaard and I met in Bradgate and looked that whole situation over. And-
Are you excited to move the town?
Talked about it. Did not come to that conclusion and then he checked back with me after that. Um, anyway, long story short, I believe it's better than it was. It's not great. Nothing can be done over there till it's dry. So whenever that happens, and if it is possible later this year, might target a couple of spots for some repairs. There is a proposed project that would bypass some of the tougher areas, but rough figuring that there may end up as a hundred thousand dollar project. And after he thought about it and we looked at it, he said, "You know, yes, some, some improvements could be made, some repairs could be made." And I think we'd go that route first before a hundred thousand dollar project in that drainage district. But, so anyway, uh, looked at, talked to some of the Bradgate folks and everybody's a little bit happier. They're never happy when there's water in the backyard, but, so, anyway, we looked at that and it was very positive and that's a really good idea is to do something later down the road. That's last week.
Okay, I had the LEC on Monday morning. Uh, Wednesday evening, I was down in Four Dodge, five-thirty for landfill. They did select, uh, the Bunsfeld from Mason City.
Oh.
Um, they had four really good finalists. Um, by what sway this and her decision was, uh, the four managers, all, three of them had picked her as their number one choice. So, that, that kind of, yeah, they obviously feel they can work well with her and stuff, so, uh, so they offered her the job and they had her, but I'm assuming she accepted. I believe she did that night. She was very excited and I had her on Skype, so. And that's all I had.
Okay.
I had none.
Um, Thursday the sixth, I had a conference call with Iowa Workforce Development. Given a new labor person who's agreed with it, it's down the committee. That was it.
I hope not.
That makes it easy for me.
Not official.
Why can't you just say that when you say it?
I know.
Cause I was-
Danny didn't want to.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? We're in drainage.
Thanks. Thank you.
I don't know whether we should just make mandatory bathroom walk now or wait for the hour and a half after we-
I don't think it's gonna take that long.
I hope not. But if I start getting fidgety, you know I should have went to the-
DMV.
That's my first cup of coffee, so I didn't drink anything this morning personally, so.
I did, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, by the time I leave in the morning, I usually get a cup of coffee and am fried. Drive to Dale's Goldfield, just love it. Goldfield's rolling. I don't go to the math for my own, or Goldfield. I'm just like, oh, by the time I get there.
I gotta go.
And it's only forty, forty-five months, so.
I just, that, that process, that, it's something that'll come.
Yep.
What is it gonna be? It's gonna be a massive one. But I think you made a comment.
How are you? Oh, good.
Forty.
Morning.
You start fighting now.
Turn the air on. Don't drink, turn the air down. Well, I didn't know how many people were coming, so I thought I'd have a little.
Oh my God, they're hot.
Yeah.
Dave, are you trained in CPR? Are you trained in? You remember, you remember? Cause a lot of people have heart attacks from drinking now.
Really?
Yes. Why, you keep, you don't drink that?
No, no, no.
Your heart rate is with that energy.
Nothing but Scotch and water for you.
I need it.
Unheeded. Uh, nice to see. Thank you for your work. Uh, DNR, they're sending them back so that that project is not a water quality violation.
There you go.
So that's, that's a positive on that one.
Absolutely, yeah.
Did you drive by the ditch up there? Dial?
Not this morning, but I was, yeah.
Looks nice.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Yeah, it really does look good.
It does look good. They're gonna give a grasp on it. They're gonna meet with Jen's and look at an intake north of the road, uh, just to take up that water before it gets to the road.
Well, all Dial requested was just make sure it's a, a length of his planer so he doesn't have to try to-
Damn, you guys are looking at it.
Yep. Are you, is that just thought process or is that gonna be definite to install it and take? And that's gonna be right over the final line?
Yeah.
I'm not worried about how it's saved.
We're in drainage. You'll be eleven sub five completion hearing.
I think a little conclusion on what a completion hearing is, um, it's basically, you need to get noticed, everybody, that the pipe runs through. A lot of times you notify everybody in case there's other issues, but it's, did the contractor fulfill his contract? Is there any items needing attention? Um, someone had mentioned a plastic pipe showing down near the outlet. Paul Davidson called me this morning. He was planting in the area. He noticed also some pipe exposed near the outlet. Um, I don't believe I should hold up the completion hearing, but we need to make arrangements to get it covered up. I'll wanna get out there and see if we should use rock or dirt or what we should use, but, uh, the project is working well. You know, I'm familiar with how fast they got it installed. Our recommendation is to accept the job, so we did. We had sent two pay estimates. Number two included everything but the retainage. I think you've seen that, fifty-five thousand, six hundred, forty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. And then the final one-
What was that again, Rick?
Fifty-five thousand, six hundred, forty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. And then we did the final, uh, also, no change in the quantity, but it pays retainage. And the retainage is a big enough job that retainage is ninety-nine thousand, five hundred, ninety dollars and fifty-five cents. Ninety-nine, five ninety, one five five. So, we're here to get any feedback with if you know of any, know of any other problems with the district, the tile or anything. Then we're recommending acceptance, subject to any repairs, um, in payment of fees. I think it's thirty days after the hearing, is that what you paid the final? So this ninety-nine thousand won't be paid until at least thirty days from now.
Things like the very outlet and exposed plastic tile, will you be checking with the contractor on that?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we'll get that taken care of one way or another.
Have you, have you been down and looked at it or?
No, I need to look at it myself. I told Paul that, run and get out there. I know I drove down there and looked at it. I don't recall seeing that. I know, but that's what I was trying to get from somebody else too, so I'd like to get my eyes.
Yeah, I haven't pointed out where they're- Yes, right on the top of the basin where the two of them together.
It's right there, just the most big of that.
Comes over and then what they're on, it's not gonna stay at the angle it is.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna stay at the angle it is. Maybe it's already, you know, I was looking at it last fall. It probably washed off already. It's gonna be, have to be concrete because it's just, it's so sticky.
Oh, okay. Good input. I will look at it hopefully today. Um, yeah, if not, I'll be down again this week, I think.
Has anything else been brought to your attention, concern wise on the project?
Uh, the intakes ended up a little high. Landowner's gonna cut those off more flush.
Do we have any, Dave, do you know of any areas out there where it was sucking dirt?
I haven't seen, I haven't been anywhere, but I don't-
I know, but I'm just, I don't think there is. Carmen, did you guys have any out that way?
Uh, we've got some spots that are damp that weren't before, but I've been told that one's a puddle or nothing, so.
Yeah, we'll run into it and end up a little mound and maybe trap some water that wasn't trapped before. Just to get through a winter or two, that situation should get better too, so.
In conjunction of that, uh, yet I've seen the height of the intakes, is that possible because they were installed, you know, with, like, during the project?
Yes.
And that it settled?
Yes, yes. And I, I don't mind a little bit around an intake to get it just a little bit lower to take the water better. So, um, these cases where cutting it down is too much, it doesn't sound like that's the case here, so. If they just cut them as-
Yeah, I'm like, level off and cut them.
And there's just-
Last day for hand saw, they-
Yes, so it's pretty easy, pretty easy, quite easy, yeah.
Okay.
Um, going up, something just for the meeting as far as maybe a poss, an extra cost crossover pipe. Um, I wanna look at that, but see what our spacing is on crossover pipes, uh, connecting the old to the new. We don't like to go too far with relying on the old. We wanna get it into the new, so I'm gonna look at that. And also, there's a quarter section south of the Bradgate Road that doesn't have a pipe over to it. I should have said Ben about this. Um, we're gonna talk, secondary roads about the most economical way to do that is Bradgate flat top. Whether we need to call this a district lateral when they decide to add it, if they'll have to come in and work that.
So there's nothing there now that I think they wanna add something?
Yes, yeah. It is kind of an isolated. So if they're small, we like to bore them if we can because- Yeah, this is a fairly small, you wouldn't be going anything very huge.
Runs too new to-
I know, to tear it up.
I don't think it has to be huge, no.
No, no, I'm sure it's not that mature.
So would that be something the district would pay for then or how would that?
That's what we'll have to figure out the best way to do that because if, if it's, you end up with it as a county lateral, then the secondary roads would pay for everything under the right-of-way. If there's another way to do it privately and have them pay towards that, I wanna look at both options.
You'll figure it out?
Yeah, we'll figure it out. We'll figure which are options the best and come back to you with that.
That was Ferguson's only questions on this project, was the lateral and the getting to this laptop.
What question is that in? Is it Rutland or is it Avery?
I believe it's Avery.
Okay. Avery one.
He said, you think it's Rutland?
Avery twelve.
Avery twelve?
Yeah, this could be a little, so, yeah. I'm gonna put on the drawing list. My isn't labeled very well.
Okay.
This is just our working drawings.
Well, I have one question that I, you have the number for approved of final pay at ninety-nine, five ninety, but yet Dave said he thinks that you're gonna have to put concrete, so how, where does that concrete come out of?
Yeah, I, I believe that we will work that out with an independent contractor more than likely. But that's why I wanna-
Wouldn't it go towards with the, with the fee of the, the project? Or would you just bill that as a repair?
I, I bill it as a repair product because of the neutral conditions, um, so we just got somebody local to do it. That's why I look at it anyway.
Would we be able to use it towards AFSMA or is it too late for that? Um, probably.
One yard, John, I think.
Oh, one, you, you're not talking, I'll be wasting much up at, going back quarry. They dump that much every night up there.
Yeah, they do.
I'm not kidding.
So it's not a huge thing that's gonna have to be-
What are you talking, John, do you hear?
Right at, right at the basin, the dirt has washed away where the dirt, where the cement comes over the top and hooks the two together. The dirt has washed away on the backside, so the black plastic is exposed. The very end, yes.
Yeah, we'll work with that.
I just didn't wanna, been three trucks, three, and we're trying to figure out who's paying for it and-
You pay a premium for one yard.
Yeah.
You don't pay dollars for it and five hundred dollars for one yard. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll get eyes on it. We'll come back to you.
Unless riprap would be good enough for it, you know.
Yeah, I don't know if it'd stay there. Probably not. Too steep?
On the edge of the top, it's just, it's just straight.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. I don't know how you wanna handle this for your motions, but, um-
Didn't we on the pay estimate number two, wasn't that dropped before? It's a while back and we decided we needed to push it to this?
Yes, I'm quite sure it's been quite a while. We'll, we'll have the D probably.
All right. Another option is we could just take, take that, kind of get rid of that retainage and just do the salary. Is that hard to do, Chutby?
No, you just, you make an amendment to the, the pay estimate, um, on, for that repair.
So these are two-
That's how it should be done.
These are two separate.
I'll make a motion for pay estimate number two. Cause that one we've gone through.
That's why I say I'll second that, cause that is, I'm saying that's separate.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor of that?
Aye.
All in favor? Both, carried.
Then I'll make a motion for pay estimate number three, the ninety-nine thousand, five ninety, fifty-five retainage, minus the concrete cost it takes to repair that outlet.
And that's, that's a good motion, and what that will allow us to do is hopefully get repaired, because we know the actual cost to take off.
Yeah, and along with that, is it fair to ask your keys if they want to come back and do that?
Yeah, I figured I'd make the call.
Yeah.
And they say what you just proposed and take the cost out of it, that's probably not cost effective?
There you go.
Because they have, they have to transport and that.
And all that.
I think.
Great motion.
Perfect.
Any other discussion?
Just to be fair to the original contractor.
Yes, yes, exactly, yeah.
So I give them the first chance to fix it.
There you go, good rule.
Yes.
You guys want to see a picture of this, I kind of got a picture of this, what's happened here. Rick, you want to take this home, see on the backside of that where they put that collar on there and all that dirt.
Oh, I see. On the left of the screen you can see where the dirt.
The dirt's worse, it's gotten worse since then.
You can see kind of the bulge of the concrete that's on the joint between them. It's not a very big area.
No.
I think if you can follow through with all the recommendations, that'll work.
Yeah, yeah. Then in giving the contract.
Yes, don't just, make sure you have the conversation with them.
This screen looks like mine cracked and smeared.
Happens when you're careless, correct?
Yeah, I know. I sit in my house sometimes on the car, I forget when I get out.
If you want to see a bad one.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye, all in favor.
So do we need another one for the completion of?
I'd make a motion to, on the completion.
One sec.
Any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye. Great project to be done. Yeah, and I think this repair won't be a big deal, just be your key deciding if they want to do it themselves.
You got a question back there, Bruce?
I just want to hear it, examine it up, what I can do.
Well, we talked about the intakes, which is to do with the completion. I think the other thing that you and I looked at would have to do with the classification. So I was going to make mention of that, because we do have to appoint the commissioners for the classification, reclassification.
Yes.
Okay, um, Jamie's claim is the next one. I would like to file a petition to, to draw my bid out of this, the old Ruth Davis. I talked to Jim Hudson on it, I talked to Rick Hopper about it before. Our water went the other way since nineteen forty-nine, okay? And they bought, before, I have no idea when they were put in. Ruth Davis bought the farm in nineteen forty-nine, it was going that way already. Then I was told by Rick that our watershed goes that way. What does not, our watershed's involved with this, the water never runs that way, eighteen years I've farmed it, never has. And we take a hundred acres of your getting water to us. So we're taking a hundred acres of watershed out of this stuff there to take it the other way, plus we got our own water going that way. So we have, and that was our complaint when we got charged fifty-two thousand, was they said our watershed went that way, and it does not. We're taking a hundred, instead of fifty-four acres going that way, we're taking a hundred acres going the other.
Is there a.
Me and my boys remain.
Do you have a written petition on that, or objection, or is this just verbal, or?
It's just verbal right now, but I want to make, aware of you're going to ignore that, because we will put a petition filed for Ruth Davis to withdraw on this operation. And it's fifty-two thousand roughly. Because we lose no way, we had Bill Nash, he came up and did it the first time, and he says there's no way he has been, didn't have us in it, because it shouldn't be out. Now you guys switched the project after that, and we got hooked back into it. I was out of it, because I didn't want to make no scuff, but then Ruth Davis passed away, I'm the executor, so now I'm involved with it. And I had to call Jim Hudson, doing bookwork this last week, I have Eric out there looking at the watershed, would you agree there's a hundred acres coming our way here?
Well, the surface water appears to flow west.
West, uh, a hundred acres roughly, forty-five and fifty-five, I took two different fields.
From, you know, from visual observation, there is surface water in that Davis, how many acres is that Davis property?
Our Davis property is a hundred and sixty acres.
Hundred and fifty acres.
But there's only fifty-five or sixty that's in this district.
Okay.
The other, and the water district that's drawn.
But it, you know, surface water wise, does flow westward, but I did.
And a hundred acres, the neighbors come our way too, right?
It appears that way.
Okay.
But there again, that's why I said, we do have to appoint the commissioners, and I feel that that will be involved in their discussion with Rick on the reclassification.
Yes. It will be. Um, we downloaded the contours, and there, there was an area there where ponds could be taken either way. The elevations of water. And we've actually decreased the watershed compared to what it was, how it was drawn originally already. And I've looked at the Davis ground. What Hudson has said for years, for decades, is you don't get out of the drainage district, you can lower their benefits. So what I've looked at so far, just myself, was a fifty percent reduction in the Davis property, in the marginal area that could go either way. That's, having met with commissioners, you guys are going to appoint commissioners today, we're going to look at it. I looked back at the reclassification, we did things like reduce the land here at the outlet, reduce the land that was further away from the tile. And so we've done several of those things already, we just need to take another look at it. The Trish looked back at the minutes for meeting that was held previously on this, when the reclass was approved in two thousand seventeen. And part of the discussion was if we would look at this again, if this project went forward. And part of the adjustments would be that extreme ponding areas would be increased. And two thousand seventeen is a good map to show the areas that are potted. So part of the discussion with the commissioners would be, how much do we increase those? Basically, we'll go down in the basin, put a hundred points greater on that that's potted, or extended periods. Leave the rest of the area alone, but the ponding areas mark those, benefits up to a hundred, so. We'll meet hopefully at this week and look at these things. It depends on Bruce's and Pat's, which way, assuming they'll assign how they've worked on it before.
Did they work on the original reclassification with you?
Yes.
So they have knowledge? Do you have knowledge of Bruce's concerns?
Yes.
And like I told him, they would be addressed when you put this down?
Now, it feels like it won't be to the extent that Bruce has thought it, but there will be big adjustments.
Bruce?
Just so you know, why we wasn't in this water district, if it was a sinkwell out there, our water never went nowhere. And that's why they took it west. And then they took the sinkwell out, the sinkwell was still out there north of the hog house, brick all mowed together, you want to see it? And that's why we never leave, the rays went west. And that's the whole thing behind this, there's proof of it, Jim Hudson says we got a hundred percent proof of it. And he says there's no reason we're in this district at all. And that's why I'm filing a petition today.
Jim isn't an engineer, doesn't know contours, he's very good drainage wise.
Has that well been plugged?
Before I farmed it.
But it's.
It was way back when, I don't know what, who actually did. Well, John, you farmed it once, yeah, was it out there then?
It was there then.
It was there. So it had to be one year you farmed, right? It's a second year you farmed, yeah, probably twenty, twenty, twenty-five years ago. But you talk about Jim Hudson don't know drainage.
On the way down.
I don't know what he said, he said he's not an engineer.
Right, no, I was, I do that, he's not an engineer. But this whole project, I don't know why, with the old dredge ditch, I still didn't, not figure out why they had projected to go to the new dredge ditch northeast on there. And I heard, I heard two different stories. Well, when you put it, and those new dredge ditches went in a lot later than this one did. So you had a new dredge ditch, new outlet and everything. If you put a new tile in, do you hook up the old tile, or would you go to a new outlet, do you hook up your new? Why this was never put in northeast or east, I have no idea. It would have been shorter, it would have been cheaper, would have saved a lot, got a lot of money, and Jim Hudson told me that too. So I'll be quiet.
I would tell you, if you're going to file a petition or the paper, written one, to get it to Trish, then we'll go from there.
Thank you. So, yeah, I guess we're looking for a point of commissioners to reevaluate this reclassification, with the project having gone forward.
Yes.
And that would meet with how it was summarized.
Is there any reason that Brent Keenest and Pat Hill wouldn't be the commissioners, they have prior knowledge? I would, I would make a motion to.
Very fair, yeah, they did a nice job of taking the six out there for us, so.
And.
That'd be very similar.
Other than the fact that one of these days they're going to tell us.
But they have worked with Rick on the, on the original reclassification, I would make a motion to appoint Brent Keenest and Pat Hill as the commissioners for the reclassification.
I would ask them to, if they're interested in doing it again, one of these days they're going to tell us, we're busy. We're busy farming, living.
Well, he told me that, Brent told me that when I called him last week, when he said he'd probably be available yet sometime this week.
Hopefully Pat will be too, because I do believe they've done a very good and fair job.
There's very many changes.
I'd second Eric's recommendation.
Need a vote on that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, carried.
We need to do the claims.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
We dropped over that.
I'm sorry. Dr. Carmen just briefly this morning. The part we're addressing here is the part that's along the road, south of the gravel road, where there were many, many trips made in and out there. That area is one point one four acres. And what I've done so far is treat it like the wider easement over the tile, where we disturbed it. That is, works out to twelve, with the formula we use, like sixty percent first year and three seventy-five corner or something like that. Two hundred, two twenty-five, I think, which is forty in the second year, twenty ten. That comes out to twelve hundred and sixty-six dollars per acre for a total of one thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. One, four, four, three, twenty-two, four. I guess, and we'll just step forward, this is what we're recommending on that one.
That's a forty, what was it, forty, twenty or forty, thirty?
Oh, I.
I'm just trying to remember.
Yeah, I've got a copy in the file.
What is it you want?
Is that agreeable with you, Carmen?
Yeah, for that portion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve that payment of the damage claim for Carmen Johnson on this project.
One second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both, carried.
So then the other part is, that's through the contractor, right?
Yes, that's what I'm looking at.
This gets us.
We're done.
To the driveway issue is resolved.
Yes.
Now, in my opinion, the next time we do this, we want to make damn sure that the contractor is aware, because this, we have the right of way, and if we got a driveway and they're using something else, it's all theirs, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, but this was the case when they never put a driveway.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, I think all the cards have to be laid out, because for us to go back and try to do this after, that's the reason we put the easement in, so that we have the access to it.
Yep. Eliminate the headache.
Fifteen hundred dollars worth of damages.
More headaches than that.
No, shut up.
But that's a good point, you got to learn from previous.
Like I say, every drains project we do, I learn something, I just couldn't imagine that this could be a problem, but it does.
Yeah.
Every single one, you learn something, something happens. There's others learning more than others too. Now, I'm going to ask those.
Can I make a request that I think I've made in the past? Were there deviations like this of easements? Could you mandate, you know, that the contractor or the engineer, somebody, contract, you know, give notice to the landlords so that they can participate and be up to speed rather than?
Better communications, that's what we're going to have.
Well, I've been putting in a whole lot of time, tracking this down and trying to figure out how this happens, I'm still not sure I have all the answers. And, you know, it's like, everybody's got, you know, one if not two cell phone numbers for me, an email, you know, addresses. And I never got any notice until I discovered this on November first last year. And I find that frankly inexcusable, you sure can find me when you're setting down bills.
Yeah, and I've talked to Jordan, our firm, and he says that, and this shouldn't have been taken further, but the tenants and the contractor were the ones that decided on this.
Well, that's the whole thing, I think that when some two people talk out of the field, that still doesn't give the ability to have a, the landowner that is not notified, because that tenant's not paying the bill.
Right.
And once, and once my guy drives back empty across the field.
It's free.
They all follow the try. You know, that's what they do.
Yeah.
So the answer to your question is yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good. I think I'll step a lot of evidence.
Yeah, absolutely. Thirty-five branch C, we've talked about supplemental contract, they've got it here. And they got it to the contractor's facility last week. Haven't seen it back yet. But I guess what I'm looking for is, most individuals are signing a supplemental agreement, all subject to getting it back from the contract. Just follow up the stations they're at, and what stations they have to install to. One important one, I think, is the contractor being responsible to move the stock of pipe back to the original alignment. Be sure that he understands that. And the start on the before September first, subject to the corn being harvested. And they, someone talked to Dial and he's thinking.
He's sitting right behind you.
My golly, there he is, so we can get it straight from the horse mouth.
New September is with eight units.
If I was to guess today, I'd call it fifty.
Oh, I remember you saying. So this is on before September first, subject to the corn being out, so this is a big enough issue we'll all be keeping track of that.
Number seven, it says the contractor shall notify the owner at least twenty-four hours prior to resume construction, which is fine. But when we have the discussion on this, as you're putting it together, we also talked about the contractor being notified when the sequence was harvested.
Yes.
So they are fully aware.
Yes, absolutely.
I think I'm starting.
Yes, because Dial's approximate date, nobody knows, because we don't know what the growing season, but you think mid, mid September?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they'll be the last one.
So let's just go with mid-September, we don't want them starting mid-October.
Right, yeah, yeah. No, no, that's not acceptable. As a matter of fact, our guy in the field, there was somebody from King King, they were out there last week. And our guy, and reiterated with them, they'll be able to pay it, you know, in the year of the day after the corn's out.
Yep, and the work should be complete on before November fifteenth. So, approximate date takes two months.
Yes.
And that should be plenty of time.
Yes, if the weather's halfway decent, it should be. Yes, if the weather's halfway decent, it should be plenty of time.
So, someone needs to-
Well, I would.
Really get them out there after completion of-
They put the snow bags in.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, I, I, I'm sorry.
We do not wanna be having a conversation with first about-
Absolutely. They want them.
No.
They will be here. They will be here.
That's, that's-
And this is gonna be documented, all our contacts will-
No, all, it's written right here.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
So.
And they were, they didn't have any questions, it sounded to me like they were gonna sign it and send it back, so.
Then, I would make the motion to approve the supplemental contract, or King Contracting LLC as printed. Have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All, carry.
I thought I heard somebody vote back there. TV's playing tricks on me at home, too, I hear this coming from the corner. I shouldn't have missed that, I know.
Yeah, sound, sound.
There you go.
No, I would get concerned with this project.
Could you please? Oh, okay.
Okay.
No, no, I was picking it up, so I-
Well, I didn't wanna be feeling bad either, if I wouldn't have signed on-
Brent Keenest talked to me about something.
Oh, he got some down, didn't he?
Why, this branch, I wanna make sure the branch is covered on this. And I don't think it is, but we're planning to do it. Okay, that was, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I made this discussion with a couple of different people, and yeah.
Well, Rick, I, I would like to make sure that when you get that copy back from King's, that it's emailed to Trish, so that it's in our file. And then she can get us a copy, or at least we have the ability to look at it-
Yes.
-in our possession. And I'd also like to make sure that we now keep them notified that field's planted, everything's on track to be our guest, best estimate in the middle of September, because we are not gonna stand for October, whenever you show up.
That's right.
And this, and this one was just two laps each.
No, that's a hundred dollars. Okay.
They don't tell us, but we can ask. Okay, so once they get going, I'll bet you we can give you a pretty close estimate three weeks out. There, that's, yeah. And I, when they were working on the ditch there last week, Sean from, from King happened to come by and he stopped. And I told him then, we're planning fifteenth of September, and so he said he was gonna email everybody in the company that had anything to do with it, so.
But now, didn't you move all the pipes?
Yep.
You moved them personally.
Probably not, didn't you?
Right, so that's, that's the point. I know everybody's anxious to get it done, but if they don't, if they move the pipe and, 'cause they aren't there yet, and some, we end up with six, eight, ten pipe broke, who are you supposed to be gonna get blamed for it?
We inventoried that already.
And, and that's where I'm going. We wanna make damn sure the pipe, we know that there's eleven that are cracked, or whatever the number, I'm not saying eleven are cracked, but we don't wanna end up with two truckloads that have been damaged, and then we all sit here and say, well, who did it?
No, we, we've got it-
We have a number on it, awesome.
Yes.
I'm just trying to-
No, no, that's a great point, yeah. It, that could be a problem if we, if we don't keep that. We just want to factor it. Who's gonna put it in the back?
Supposedly King, that was in the-
Supposedly agreement.
But that, that's what I'm saying, I don't want Dial to get the phone call that, oh, God, well, we're in business or in process of bringing a excavator up, so, could you help us and put pipe out, and then we're in the wrong location, then they get climbed and-
Yeah.
It don't take much to bang it, and they crack, so.
That's a good point.
Oh. Sorry.
Sounds like you've been revelation.
I did.
Oh. Stating's revelation?
No.
Oh, okay.
reading, uh.
Okay, the, this is the preliminary report for the ditch cleanout, and it appears to check the bottom elevation's always on it, we've located the pipe, it's being repaired. There's always some hidden, so the pipe quantity will probably blow up some. I'm, I'm hoping that it'll get better price than I had in there, but it's a fairly long ditch for the cubic yards that we have that too. So I put it at five bucks a yard. I'm hoping it's closer to four, but we'll see. I know that Rick and Travis Peterson have a genuine interest in this. What I'm gonna ask for is, I mean, it's already due for the public hearing on this report, but you also set that as a base ability. This falls under the category of repair, and by greens law, you have to do a repair report calls for it. It has between half a foot and two feet of sill, only about half a foot at the lower end, about two feet to go up here there more. And that's how we came up, we measured all that, and that's how we came up with the nine thousand three hundred and twenty-four cubic yards. There've been two or three cleanouts through the years on this, but I noticed, I've just read, they're all about twenty, twenty-seven years apart.
Yeah.
So that must be like how long it takes one to fill it back in.
Yeah, probably takes twenty, but wheels the motion ago, takes a while for somebody to petition, but yeah.
If you, if you said twenty-five years, that's probably a good, yeah.
So my question is, Rick, are we, are we just, is this gonna give us another twenty-seven years before the thing possibly needs to have the full cleanout?
I would say yes. That's kinda what I was looking back to the history of it. Yeah, that's what we're shooting for, is, as a minimum, um, give us about twenty-five years. There might be some amount of extra pipe worth in the meantime, maybe two or three, who knows? But-
We can drive by on the dark bus and see.
I'm sorry, I was, you know, like ripping off. Making sure that this is inclusive of any pipe work now?
Yes, yes, we've got like twenty-six or seven.
You've got those located already?
Yes, yep. Yeah, we use, we use our boat process, it works real well with two four-wheelers. When there's no trees on the ditch, you can, that way, the guy in the bottom can check it across, have him go forward, check it again. Some of these are so slow to walk in the bottom, I mean, I've done that.
Oh, that'd be a killer to walk bottom.
Oh, I've done it personally, and, and some of them are solid and you're fine, but some of them are mud, and you're thinking almost your knees hopeless. So, we also do probing a few places to try and compare the hard bottom to where the design says it should be.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, you have quite often find that the design, they never got dug to the design depth.
We've seen it both ways, where it's been overdug, and we've seen it where it hasn't been dug enough, so, yeah, we check it.
So I mean, this is along with any, this is the entire ditch?
Yes.
So along, this project indoor and the others, you're gonna have elevation stations on it?
Yes, and this one worked out really well, doesn't always happen this way, that one of the old plans had benchmarks on it, I think it was a fifty-three plan. It had benchmarks, and we found two of those. It could be like bolted, uh, the, an elevation on a culvert, or a bridge, or whatever. We found two of them. So we were very confident with where this bottom should be.
Okay.
Two, is it thirty days or forty?
Forty.
Forty.
Forty from now?
Yep.
No, it's dark.
Yep.
So forty puts the square on, uh-
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second?
July twenty-second.
What now?
And then you'd be able to-
I wrote it with a question mark, July twenty-second. Hearing on per and bid.
Twenty-second?
Three, two. What's the pair?
And you said-
Give you the forty and-
Hearing and bid letting on the same day?
Yes.
Do you count this week or do you go the next week?
No.
Yes.
Next week.
The week that you win.
Well, per anybody saying otherwise, I would make a motion for Monday, July twenty-second, nine o'clock.
Would you ever accept it first?
No. Okay, first I'll make a motion to accept the preliminary hearing engineering report.
I will second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All, carry. Set the hearing. So, nine o'clock?
Sounds good.
Nine o'clock, Monday, July twenty-second, the hearing date for DD number ten. Now, if we can combine this motion, Dave, we're gonna have a motion for the bid letting after. So, that's the date.
I'll second that motion for the hearing.
Any other discussion on that?
The only thing, the only thing I say is, you know, that spur, it'll be done as a work order or something.
Yep.
Okay.
All in favor? Set the, July twenty-second, nine o'clock?
Aye.
Aye. All is carried, okay, no, that's the bid letting. I'd also-
How much time do you suppose, if there's any complaining, question?
I would think, I'll take all three minutes to go through the report.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Say fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes and-
I would, having said that, I would make a motion to set the bid letting for Monday, July twenty-second at nine fifteen AM.
I'll second that motion also.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All, carry.
So that means anyone who's interested is gonna have a bid to you at the four-eight-thirty, or at eight-thirty on the starting day?
Probably four-nine.
Four-nine.
Just before we get in here, yeah.
What else you got there?
Um, I'm just gonna keep it there. I'm gonna need to dial and Jerry Jensen to look at intake placement in that field. Dial mentioned last week maybe forty feet. Uh, that, wouldn't get a, that'd be my guess, if we go up there and take a look. I'd have a lot of money too. I mean, like, yeah. Yeah, we got that. Okay. So, like, great return. We'll get an estimate on that, and I-
I would want to do it, but-
You know, Jerry Jensen's an excellent contractor, and Dial mentioned his name, but it was, it was very good results, so.
And that's just on that intake out in the field?
Yep, yep, we'll come back to it, make more information.
So then Dial, are we gonna, eventually are you gonna have, put grass up through there?
I think that'd be the best thing to do, and help hold-
Help hold that ditch?
Yep. And then it's over. Right now, they've got the ditch, looks up about two foot higher than the field.
Oh, it looks really nice.
Looks nice, other than there's no place for the water.
Oh, I'm still worried about that.
Take a nice pond there.
That hole, or the, just the grate, or that, it isn't gonna take a whole lot of water, and that's, mud's gonna slide to cover that up.
But, I think the plan was to get it hydroseated or something on the-
I think they already have.
It's, it's already seed on top.
Yeah, they, they sprayed some grass seed out there already.
But there's sixty percent chance rain tonight, and how much of that rock, grass is gonna end up in that pipe?
I think it's a very job right.
It'll be a nice half inch.
Yeah, it'd be nice, just a nice general rain.
Yeah.
If anybody had hoses, they could stretch out there and bring it, real nice, gentle.
Rick, there's a-
John, you gonna go into something?
Concern with, it, it looks good, but Dial just mentioned the, the embankment riprap, and that is actually higher now, so is that creating a dam effect? Where it-
If it's rocky, it'll find its way through mostly.
I mean, I looked at it, it looks good, but there is a concern, is it a dam effect that it's just gonna divert it back into the ditch, back under the road, back into an erosion problem on the south side of the road?
Well, that's-
And I, I do not want to ask for a three to five inch rain to prove that theory.
I, good point, but I believe what we're talking about for intake now will help immensely.
Well, yeah, that's why it's being proposed.
Yeah, that's why you wanna push this, yeah.
But, and hopefully, we don't have the three to five inch rain to theoretically find out before that is-
Well, that is the ditch that's higher than the intake there, keep it from converting to the intake, where the dam that's down on the bottom of the ditch-
Yeah.
-that's higher than the grate by quarter base, you know, will force it to go back under the culvert.
Okay, we've, we've tried to divert the swell though, so it lines up with the intake, so I guess I was thinking of it, give into the ditch and buy the intake.
Well, take a look, Rick, I'm not sure.
Okay.
It may be too, it may be too high.
Okay.
Go the original route, let's look.
Yep.
And even with the amount of water that we've seen flows there, surface water, even with the addition of the intake in the field, that will not take all of the water under the- So, the concerns are valid with where it sits right now, with the little riprap jobby, and that it looks nice, and it's nice it's seeded, and we hope we don't get big rain, that will help everything, but, some point in time, even with installation of intake in Dial's field, that could become an issue, 'cause the water will still flow, so it's gotta be, you know, fine tuned.
Yes, yes.
How many intakes are on the plan up through the field, on the big top?
Or the any, I mean, we can, we don't add a lot of intakes typically, we rely on the landowner putting in their own laterals and, and those.
You think there should be some big intakes right on top of the main, up through on property lines?
Well, the only one from that place in that ditch would be down to the south fence where, in that property use line. There's nothing across that whole field, is there? No intake?
No.
It's just down in that far south fence line, and then it goes-
Well, I mean, from the north side of the road, going north.
I know that, but I'm just saying, that whole field on the south side, there's something, there's no intake, and like he said, there's, they don't put those in on the-
Yeah, but the water does not follow that inch, or that tile line on the south side of the road.
No, no.
To the salt of the east, south east.
Well, that was my question a long time ago, whether we should put some type of intakes on there to try to, but, all we can hope is that we're gonna get some grass to hold that water, to hold that ditch, to hold the, and-
Getting an intake added will help that situation where to handle the non-heavy, heavy rains. Yeah, but there's gonna be some-
If memory-
In order for an intake to work, you almost have to put a little terrace across there too, to stop the water, so it can't go down the intake, otherwise it goes by, you know, like you say, at property lines or something, put a grass terrace in it.
If memory serves on this project, that intake that is, is a contentious deal, the big one in the ditch over the tile line, that was actually added.
Yes.
So.
Correct.
You know, the intentions are correct, just as adding another intake out in Dial's field is correct, and I think it's all positive, but, uh, it's just a phenomenal amount of water. Obviously, the, the water didn't change coming through that field, the surface water.
Right.
Originally, it went in the ditch, went under. The only thing that did change, it did happen to divert itself and run over a grass area versus running in John's field. Is that correct?
Yep.
Previously to this project?
Well, yeah.
For the most part?
Long time ago, it always ran in that grass area and waters.
Which is al, which is always better.
Yeah.
For surface water. Like Rick said with the-
But it got so much, and it just finally rode it out the fence line, and it started to head out through the field.
Right.
And maybe that's where we should-
Two and a half to three foot.
We should probably put more of a berm there on the south side, so it does go through the grass.
Yeah.
Now, berm the field edge up a little bit, so it runs to the grass, runs through there, doesn't run out.
Let's say, there's some fine tuning that can and should be done.
Yes. Well, I think we need to look at putting some intakes up on the north road, up on one-eight.
Eight, yeah.
Also, yeah, I'd be in note for that, you know, if we look at that today. Yeah, I'd be in note for that, you know, if we look at that today.
There's a water running from that far north?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's out of them intakes up there now, that's where all the river comes from.
Comes up out of the intakes, I bet it was coming up out of the intakes probably three weeks, a year ago, summer last year was coming up.
Well, there's no...
If we get this done, it'll...
Have you been down to the outlets? Is there still water pouring out of there? Last, I haven't been down there for a couple of weeks.
Well, there's still water.
Well, I know, but is it still, it looked like it was better than a foot.
No, it's not.
Flow slowed down.
I mean, once it gets to that last culvert, it spreads out some.
I just didn't know if we'd, some of the water levels were dropping, and, because the river went down huge in the last three or four days.
There's pretty good stream of water coming in, but it don't rain every other day.
Well...
Well, and there's a box culvert under a hundred ninety, so you know the surface water's always going under there.
That's why I say, it's not that it's just started.
Right.
It's just that, we've tried to improve it with the intake, and the, you know, I'm talking more surface water, but it needs a little fine tuning, and I think Dial suggested you can certainly look at it this summer.
Yes.
An intake further to the north.
Yes.
Would be, the more water you can get into a big new tile system, and the less it runs over the top, obviously the better.
Way better. Better for everything.
Yeah, so I think that's valid thing to check out as well, along with the intake in the field.
Yep. Absolutely.
I have Ron Rasmussen stopped yesterday, I was up at my building in Humboldt Homes, the bridge, they've got something figured out, they got tired of us waiting, waiting for us, so they're going to do their own thing with the bridge, with what they currently have, they're going to, they got a company that's going to take care of that, so they don't have to worry. So, just, he said, you guys do whatever you want to do, if you end up paying for easement along there, let them know what it would be, um, they'd be interested, but they just, they got to get something done before snow flies, and, so I basically apologized that it's taken this long, but trying to get it orchestrated, it isn't up, and I blamed it all on Trish.
Well, I don't, I don't see the...
He mentioned that truth.
Because it's mostly just tree and brush cleanup.
Yeah.
I don't see the bridge having any effect on...
No, but they were going to talk, they were talking about whether they should, if they could put boxes in there and, and do it that way, and, and just put, but the way it sounds, they're just going to use the existing structure, take the top off it and, and widen it, widen it, widen it. So, he just said they, they'd come to realization that Dial wasn't going to move fast enough, and, and so I said, well, we're going at our lightning speed of whatever we can do, and I also visited with Doug Marshall, soon as he gets some of this tiling done for, then he was going to go do his little chipping thing for the authorization that we gave him, what, eight hours?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, once you get done, so you can get a calculation to do with it.
So, he could calculate what it would take, and, but he says, I just got so many other irons in the fire.
I talked to him a couple of weeks ago again, and that's kind of what he said, he hadn't had a chance to do it, and wouldn't allow that.
But he will get ahold of us and let us give us a distance, so, perfect.
Good. I got a question for you. Branch A of six. Oh, here's the ditch. Trish, has anyone petitioned for a clean out on that? I don't believe so. You know? Branchy A of six?
I bet you it's young, we're doing it now.
No, no.
That's the one that Rick Peterson's doing.
Rick Peterson's doing. Oh, a clean out on it? Okay, that's, all right. If all of you's...
Yeah, he's, yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's it for me.
What else you got, Rick?
Thinking good.
That's it?
Yeah.
I make a motion to leave bridge?
Perfect. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried.
You're giving that down to Trish for me? Thank you.
Out of grainy.
I might go wash.
I got a question. Dave, everybody else, did you get an email regarding open records from someone?
No.
Uh, someone doing some research on... I don't, I didn't print it out, I couldn't forward it to everybody, like, I thought everyone got it, just recently.
Because they don't...
Requesting some information...
About drainage?
Nah, can't remember, I, I should have printed it out a lot of law, but, uh...
I'm not saying I didn't read something, but I just...
Take a look.
You didn't read something?
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm picking out it's...
I don't blame you, I don't, because I get, a half a dozen of my day crap. Just want to come in and do this and that, and this and that, and...
It's from an individual doing the research, and...
Yeah. I don't recall anything jumping out at me, so I don't, when I started reading, something I didn't.
If it's a company, I get them, I don't know why, but they got my name, and I get this, every day they'll send two or three different companies, they want to know, they want you to take their company and get their company in here to do something.
I know.
And, so I just ignore them and delete them if they don't look like they're interested.
I think in all fairness, I'll forward that on to the owner's office and let them take a look at it. There you go. I wouldn't bother you with it, you may or may not have got it.
No, I've, I've never seen anything.
I know, I was looking at that, it was cute.
I think you got anything else coming for the board?
Is that the salt?
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
That's mine. That's yours?
All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried.